All right. Has everybody read the minutes and happy with them?
I believe I like it.
They want a motion?
I'll make a motion that they're accepted as written.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The organization's kind of useless at this point in time, in my opinion. As we do not have a full board of comments, complaints, or concerns. Table that for the next one.
Unless we're only going to be a threesome from now on.
That's not a legal question, so I don't have a response.
Where's the HR post? You're on record now.
It's not a legal question, I have a response.
All right.
What do we can do?
The supervisors, I believe, have been claiming there are some technicalities as to possible people. This is by all means a five-member sitting board with two alternates, correct? Correct. Correct in that?
Originally set up as five and two alternates.
Five and two alternates, so that would be a total of seven. So there's four current people.
Active members.
Active members currently, one of which is MIA tonight due to a workload I've been involved. And two, being for lack of a better term, general layman's terms, limbo. That totals six. The supervisors could appoint an alternate. I'm just saying.
I think we should ask that a letter go to the supervisors to appoint an alternate.
Is there a motion, Mr. DiUro?
Yeah, I would make a motion. Because we got to get this thing.
I want to make a motion to have at least one alternate to sit in in Luruk. So we can have a more diverse board. I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was the motion, was it for an alternate or for?
For an alternate. The alternate will sit in.
I think the original motion was to have to send a letter to supervisors to appoint a regular member.
An alternate, not a regular member.
Well, can't an alternate go in for as long as we have an extra person?
That's fine.
They have their reasons for not wanting to appoint a regular member at this time.
Well, that's just too bad. Anybody any comments, complaints, or concerns from the audience there? UGI revised application review. Mr. UGI, the floor is yours.
Well, since I was here last, we have received approval from the conservation district. We also have our penup permit. And we have a pretty clean letter from the engineer.
Our engineer?
Yes. There's only a couple items in there which are normal.
Did you want to address those? Do you want to address the developer's agreement and the maintenance agreement at final approval?
Was looking to possibly get some of any final approval this evening.
I don't, did you, I was given a letter when I came in tonight. I don't know if you have a copy of it in the zoning office.
No.
It would be his. I received it, I received it this evening. And I would be happy to share it with you because I think we should probably look at it together before we go any further. Come on up, you can certainly approach. He's pointing out that the discrepancy in the math, that doesn't concern me because you required, you required in your proposed, or you certainly have not averaged. Okay. The part that does concern me was that under the schedule of uses in DD, it's a 25% allowed lot coverage. It's up to 65%, but that's by conditional use. And I pulled it out earlier, and I know Mr. DiUro and I looked at it before the meeting. And that is what it has, it is what it says in the zoning ordinance that you are, you need a conditional use approval for your supervisors. They're not saying that that's an insurmountable thing. I would think.
And that conditional use is just based upon your conditional square footage?
Yes. Now, 414.1 reads as follows. Applications proposing to increase in lot coverage above that provided for the DD district in the schedule of development standards shall be considered conditional use as subject to the standards of this section 414. Permit lot coverage is allowed to go to 65% in your case, but again, it has to be by conditional use. So what that means for the planning commission tonight is, I think your representation is correct. You've got a clean bill of health from both the county planning and from our engineer. I didn't see anything on the plan that violated the land development or subdivision regulations. So I think what you can possibly do is say that you're recommending the project, subject to the supervisors' held in a conditional use hearing and approving the lot coverage increase. So that's.
Well, that sounds pretty good. So then, based upon that information, we could go forward with that and then based on if, however the word was there.
Well, the, I mean, there's no questions, the board doesn't have any questions on preliminary, on recommendation. Right, everything's finished, everything's done. You got a letter from the county saying no comment. You got a letter from our engineer saying two items, basically. One, that there needs to be a developer's agreement at the time of final, and that there needs to be a maintenance agreement for the stormwater. Okay, which we are, we are the permittee, so we'll need that maintenance agreement.
The only question I have is can we look at what the intent was when this 414 was created?
Wish you could.
We can?
Zoning ordinance is going to be literally construed against the township.
Okay, then I would suggest. That we let the supervisors take a look at that though.
Yeah, I think.
I would make a motion to send that section.
Would you like, would you like to authorize me to reword it?
Yes.
Because I think what needs to be done is I think you need to go to, rather than 414, you need to go to the schedule of uses.
Yes.
And say 65% permitted.
I agree.
I think that's the intent.
Yeah, that was my first, because I was part of that.
I know you were. You and I talked about it many times.
Yep. So, in order for us to go forward with this board, that sounds good. But to go forward at this point, we got to say it requires a conditional use.
So you're going to recommend, you're going to recommend the preliminary plan, preliminary subdivision of land development plan to the board for review with the recommendation for approval, subject to the board scheduling a conditional use hearing for an increase in the lot coverage from 25% to, I think you're proposing, 40%.
If I'm not mistaken.
Anybody want to second that?
He can't make a motion.
I don't. You took C50s, right? You're showing, you're showing 48 on the plan.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion that the UDI plan coincide with the subdivision of land development ordinance and not to exceed 50%. But not to exceed 50 instead of 40. Anybody want to second that? He can't make a motion.
I don't. You took C50s, right? You're showing, you're showing 48 on the plan.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion that the UDI plan coincide with the subdivision of land development ordinance and not to exceed 50%. But not to exceed 50 instead of 40. That nagging messed me up.
Let Bob start it.
Make a motion that we move forward the plans for UGI as it meets the subdivision of land development ordinance. And as far as the zoning ordinance, it would have to be sent for a conditional use hearing at this time. And anything else?
No.
I'll second that.
The only discussion I would have is that they can, the supervisors can at their next meeting, which is Monday night, authorize the secretary to advertise for a conditional use. So they can have that hearing after only two consecutive weeks, so it's going to be the first meeting in January. Well, it'll be a second meeting in January because the first meeting is three.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say hello to the gang down there.
Oh, so I, I still got to, did I do a motion for you to rewrite?
No.
Yeah, let's do that right now. I'd like to make a motion to have Tony rewrite the section, was it 414.1? And enter it into the schedule of uses at 65%.
I'll second that.
For zero to five acres.
Yeah, for zero to five acres.
Or refer, have the schedule of uses refer to permitted lot coverage in 414.4.
Yes, that would be the best way to do it.
Nying his head. I understand, I understand you're literally interpreting, and that's what I said before, before you got here.
Can you just clarify how that process runs?
Can we finish our motion first? Vote?
Well, usually before a vote, there would be discussion, right?
Discuss before a vote of the motion, really?
Yes, after the motion, any discussion?
Oh, I, I thought it was.
It wasn't seconded, did Pat second it? I didn't hear you.
I did.
Oh, Larry did, okay. All right. So yes.
Yeah, I need discussion.
Oh, okay, well, what's the discussion?
Okay. Okay. Briefly, and Rachel, I don't know if this, when the supervisors raised the lot coverage in the DD zone, they did so by amending section 414, but they did not amend the schedule of uses, which still calls for 25%. And the schedule of uses, it refers you to section 414.1.
Oh, not .4, I forgot.
Right, and 414.1 says that any application proposing increasing lot coverage above that provided in the schedule of development standards to 25% is a conditional use. I don't think that's what they intended. I think what they intended was to allot up to 65% and anything after that, but that's, that's kind of what we need to talk to them about.
So my question is, the process for this board asking you to rewrite is then it has to go back to the board's supervisors for final consideration?
Right, and since it's an ordinance amendment, it would require public notice and public hearing.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye. Good, okay. Can I get together with the zoning officer so we can put two heads together?
No. What, we're running out?
No.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance for mixed usage.
The minutes over there is a letter they voted for discussion. It's October 21, and they approved this minute again.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
So it's in the public participation and all these things also in C, that you see?
So basically, just, you know, not to rehash the minutes, but Supervisor Lawrence, I think, made the proposal saying that, you know, why limit it to 20 acres? Why not explore the opportunity for mixed use for parcels in DD zone? And whether or not it's a pending amount of sewage is immaterial. Whether there's central sewage or not, why not, why not explore allowing a mixed use type of development in the DD zone? And there was some discussion about acreage and things like that, but it never really went very far. Somebody said something about capping the acreage and number of units, but again, that was just a discussion at that time.
And that was just an open-ended discussion, there was nothing set forth on that?
No. There was, I think, Shahanah mentioned.
Old Business C.
Yeah, under Old Business C.
The supervisors then made a motion to complete a new build-out analysis for lands with or without central sewage.
Correct, and to send it back to the mixed use in development district, back to the planning commission for review.
Yep.
So did they make a motion to do a build-out?
Yes.
They made a motion to complete a build-out analysis with lands with or without central sewage. From my knowledge, they haven't, since they made that motion, they haven't contacted a planner to do that.
So we don't have a build-out?
I think they're sending it back to you for review.
Well, we can't do anything without the build-out, can we? Really?
Well, you can explore options. Options of what to do with, and the big holdup in the DD zone, and it has been the 30,000 square foot density required.
And the build-out, we would have to set some ground rules anyway, to do the build-out analysis as far as how much square footage. But they're not going to have anything to work off of if we don't come up with something.
You'd have to have some parameters, you just can't ask somebody to do a build-out analysis with no parameters. I mean, you either use a 30,000 square foot that's currently in the ordinance, or you come up with an alternative.
So this is what we're doing right now, this is what we're going to discuss this right now.
Mm-hmm. I don't know, did you have any, did you have any discussion, guys, at your workshop about hiring a planner?
Oh, yeah.
We just can't make any real decision at any workshop, but yeah, we have to solicit for a planner.
Because I think.
Well, what I did, I told in the planning workshop, we all agreed I was going to contact Ted Ritz of the state.
One comment I would have is that you're being asked to do this review in the DD zone. It may be easier to make that corresponding with hiring a planner, so that you can have a planner available to help you out with thought process on what to do with the DD zone. Because to sit here and hash this out, you're going to need, you're going to need seven sessions.
Oh, yeah, because they're going to be done in one session.
Just a thought.
I thought the comprehensive plan was going to come first. I thought you were going to, you know, at the workshops, go over the comprehensive plan one step at a time, four or five chapters or pages, and then you, you can see where, we could all have a very clear idea of where the township is headed, what direction we want to pursue, anything new coming onboard in that plan. And then, and then you would, we all would address the zoning at that time.
But the mixed use plan is already under, change is already underway, so we're just taking it and revisiting it. But we are going to work on the comprehensive plan.
So you're, you just said the multi-use is already on its way, right?
It's been already started, yes.
From?
As a use not provided for.
Okay, all right, so you want to take a look at that?
Yes.
Well, that's the directive from the board, I believe.
Yes, that's how we're being directed from the board.
That's the motion that was made at the last October 21 meeting. Yeah. I'm reading the approved minutes, it says.
I think it's under public participation two.
Penny Lawrence said that she did not like the acreage being 20 acres or more, proposed amendment, and then, and under.
Public participation two, last line, first paragraph, last one.
Yes. Supervisor Williams made a motion to send the mixed use amendment with the density discussed by Supervisor Lawrence back to the planning commission for further work and review. Supervisor Lawrence seconded the motion, which passed two to one with Supervisor Clark voting out. That's the directive for the planning commission?
Yes.
Can it be done at a workshop? Why, why, I mean, we're all sitting here, we don't go, I mean, where do you go? From 30,000 to 3,000 or wherever, zero.
Fred, we'll get to you soon as we're done with Penny, okay?
I'll stand up so you don't forget me.
Oh, you don't have to, you're good.
So that's what, that's what they were asking the planning commission to do now? To pick a number.
It's not just pick a number, it's going to be based on.
More consideration.
Sewage, stormwater runoff, parking.
Well, how do you, where do you start? Who are you going to start?
You start with, with square footage of what's needed for each recreational area. That's, I mean, that's, that's the normal way of it coming.
Based on what the zoning is now?
No, it has nothing to do with the zoning now. It's based off of mostly state specs for like sewage. So this is going to be national specs for parking, and the engineers will have to confirm the stormwater runoff and the capability of handling it. That can't set a square footage for, because every place is going to be different, and the ground inspection is different.
So nothing can be decided tonight, you can only agree to look at it. Will this be brought up at a workshop, planning committee workshop?
I imagine it would be.
As long as we're getting information, we're going to be bringing it up and working with it. It's, it's, it's like a living, breathing organism. We're going to have to just work with it as it comes available to us, as, as the things we find out about it, we can go ahead and present it. But we're not just going to shoot from the hip on anything and just say, oh, well, okay, this sounds good, let's go ahead and go for it. We need studies, we need background, we need, we need all the investigation possible for that.
And I think hiring a planner would help you with that regard.
We're definitely going to need a planner. I actually think this whole mixed use is basically going to be starting from scratch again.
Close to design it, the design of the business, whether it's around central sewage, it's definitely going to start from scratch.
Can we get to Fred?
So, given that we've had a very contentious year over this issue, and it's back to you guys, I would hope that when you look at this, you look at your starting point as what the township would actually want. Okay, not, okay, it's come back down from the supervisory board, let's look at an acre, let's, no. That's, you know, that's not going to work, that's not going to, it'll be another year of contentious debate, and shouting and screaming, and then reviewing the video, right? I'm hoping that there's going to be some common sense here, that you all come to the realization of what the people of this township want. And it's not high-density, I don't want to see strip mall, we, we don't want to see strip malls just plastered all over the place. So I'm just hoping that you guys take that into consideration when you start looking at the various metrics of what you're going to present and what you're going to push back up to the supervisory board.
Right, it could be an understanding, we're going to set the ground rules, but what can be drawn in. Whatever is proposed or applied for has to go for a conditional use, and that's when the conditions get set to it. Like, does it fit the decor of the town, stuff like that, that comes into conditional use hearing for. This is just to say what can be done on what amount of property, with what kind of square footage needed for, for services, for utilities, to lay out the groundwork. Somebody with one acre might be able to have one apartment.
And that's.
Might have two.
Might be able to have two, I'm just saying.
But I'm just saying, you know where we're all coming from, so, you know, let's at least not go back to 3,000 and start with all that nonsense again.
Take that.
Yes.
Let me start off by saying that for those that don't know, we have been a professional engineer since 1983, and I've spent my entire professional career in the Poconos. And Bob, as you stated, you know, the first thing you need to do, let's put central sewage aside, we don't have that. So Penny was looking for what can we do to address mixed use now? All right, so if we don't have central sewage and we're just dealing with the ability to get rid of the sewage on-site, well, you know, land in the Poconos is not the best in the world as far as getting rid of wastewater. So developer would have to go through, they would have to analyze their site to see two things, because remember, when we're dealing with the ground, we have two issues that we have to deal with, stormwater management and sewage. So it's not just flushing the toilet we're dealing with, it's also dealing with the rain. So you evaluate the soils on the site to see what, how much real estate you've got, and what your absorption capacity is for your site. And you, the developer has to weigh the difference between what's needed for stormwater management and what's needed for wastewater disposal. That will help set the parameters.
Absolutely.
Because central sewage changes the picture totally, but when you're dealing with on-site disposal, that is going to be your driving influence. And these numbers are being able to get 10 to 12 units per acre or clinical, you know, right out, out the window, because you're just not going to be able to get that amount of disposal on, you know, in this area.
Depending on, depending on the testing, it's going to determine the size of the system, and how many square footage it's going to take up. There's minimums, like, you know, one, a three-bedroom house would take up 600 square foot of ground for a system, that's a minimum, considering that the park desk went flying.
In the state, through DDP, whether it's through MPDS stormwater management system or through the sewage disposal regulations, you know, will set the parameters in terms of how many units that you'll be able to get on that property, or how much commercial, you know, sewage disposal that you'll be able to go. So you could say, yes, we can do mixed usage, but it's going to be defined by what you can get rid of on that site. This picture will change once central sewage gets here. But if you want to do something now as far as addressing the mixed use, you could do that, based on what you can do as far as soil, and you don't even have to worry about what you're going to be able to get as far as units per acre, because I can pretty much guarantee that the site itself will dictate what that criteria will be.
And it's not, it's not going to change anything that's already happening today, because you could put apartments on DD district alone. You could put commercial on DD district alone. So the only thing we're looking at is combining.
Combining, allowing the two to coexist with each other on the same piece of property, and allow the same criteria that exists now if they're separate, that being the state regulations as far as stormwater management and for sewage disposal to dictate what you can do on that property, and then the developer can decide how much commercial, how much residential.
And then we're also going to address parking, which is going to take up.
But that's, I mean, I mean, you've got, you've got the Institute of Traffic Engineers, and there's plenty of other things that will address those types of issues, but it really boils down to what is your site going to be able to handle as far as, you know, infiltration of the wastewater into the stormwater? That's going to define.
And then we're also going to be looking at conservation construction, which sets aside an open area of property, lets, lets you combine the structures a little on a smaller piece, but leave a remaining piece. So there's going to be a couple things to look at in this new definition of the ordinance.
John, has this body communicated with the board of supervisors about the budget needs, and, you know, perhaps you might want to consider doing that? I have a copy of the draft budget, and planning consultant has a budget for this year of $1,000, and an anticipated year-end number of $430, so your $2,500 that was approved is not in that line item. And that line item for next year is budgeted again at $430, so your $2,500 is not in next year's draft budget either, although there is a line item called planning and zoning other, which for next year has $5,000. I think that this board, if you have not already, should take action to ensure that the supervisors have your financial means prepared for the budget for next year. the supervisors have your financial means prepared for the budget for next year.
Well, we have already requested a planner and we were given twenty-five hundred dollars.
But I'm telling you that the year-end expenditure plan does not include that twenty-five hundred dollars.
I understand that.
So you might want to ask them why that's the case and make sure that they're prepared for you. If they anticipate that you're not gonna be spending that money before the end of the year, then that money should be in next year's budget allocated for that use, and it doesn't appear to be there.
And that is one of the reasons I talked to Ted Rissick from the state to see what that helped him get from the state.
But you only have a couple of weeks for comments on the township budget.
And what'd you say it was in for next year, five grand on other?
Planning and zoning other has five thousand dollars, which is what was spent this year, fifty-three hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is the exact amount that was spent this year on budgeted. Which I would assume would include perhaps the build-out analysis that was done. But it's certainly not under planning consultant, which says four hundred and thirty dollars, and is proposed at four hundred and thirty dollars for next year.
Planning consultant says four hundred and thirty dollars?
Mm-hmm. Happy to be here. I'm sorry?
Is that the same in there for this year?
Maybe, maybe.
So this is my.
They just carried it over.
This year.
This is, mine, four fourteen dot three one three, planning consultant, had a thousand-dollar budget for this year according to the stock. But only four hundred and thirty spent and four hundred and thirty for next year's budget altogether. No, they didn't. Well, they said a thousand was what the budget was for this year. But their year-end anticipated is only four hundred and thirty. And that's all they budgeted for next year, and your planning and zoning other.
Time for a teenager to just think a thousand.
Thanks, man.
So. I would communicate efficiently with them and make sure that what you need is, where is it, how do you know where it is, and.
I'm gonna make a motion that we. Ted, something that, say we have a, have a letter written up by Sean and the coast of supervisors to see what kind of expenses we had in the past with the planners.
Over the past.
Yeah, I would, I would say over the past.
Couple of years.
Five, six years. It's about five, six years ago, I think we were using planners a lot.
Yeah, I think, I think Tyler was on retainer.
Yeah, and what the retainer was at the time.
At the same time, should we add the twenty-five hundred that they're giving us this year to, to roll over?
Yes.
Just say that. Okay, so how are we gonna word that?
You wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, have the supervisor.
Hold on, we got, we got a question.
Yes, sir.
We're all resident times two. Thanks for what you guys do, really, don't envy your job. I just, you know, more of a statement, I think this is like really a huge pivotal moment in this town. Been here since eighty-two, off and on, twice third generation. I deploy a lot, so I can't get involved, like I would love to. But this is, this is a huge moment for this town, the way this goes forward, and I think, I wish we'd get more people involved. This is the pendulum swing, how this town's gonna go. No one's talked about that majestic river behind us, you know, behind us. What's this gonna do to that? Gonna become the, you know, the Hudson River? It's gonna be, like you said, another three lane, New Jersey, Jersey barriers. I don't think the towns and people like us and me that got kids here, grandkids here, lots of extended family here, don't wanna be New Jersey. So this is tough. And I know you guys are in a position to make that pendulum swing either way. It really comes down to what's going on in here and where this leads. So thank you for what you do, and please, keep Milford, Milford. Thank you, Mike.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just reiterate what I said before. Right now, any of these properties can be used for just apartments or just commercial. It's already in our ordinance. The mixture of the two is the only thing we're talking about. Now, the original plan for the, for the higher density has been torn back to us to look at with on-lot septic, which you're not gonna have that kind of a density, not with on-lot. All right? So that's, that's why I'm saying, somebody could go ahead and just build apartments there. We can't, we're not gonna be able to stop because of bar to bar. We, yeah, we have. And they could turn around and make it all commercial, all commercial developments. Well, if you're doing a mix, you're getting a little of each, and that's why we're going back to this one, instead of doing it with cells, to set the ground rules for what's gonna be, you're capable to be applied for.
Well, that's an interesting point, I mean, I've heard that a couple of times that, you know, you could go ahead and do apartment developments without the central sewage. So how many would, I guess maybe you don't know, and maybe that's what you're looking into, as to how many units you could actually build without central sewage?
That would depend.
That's gonna depend on, on what, on what we're doing. Every, it has to do with mostly testing. The ground has to be tested to see what it can handle, because now you're, like, like Doug said, you're looking at septic water and you're looking at stormwater runoff, well, on the same property. So it's gotta be able to handle the two and not wash into the, the aquifer.
So if I were a developer, and I know there's several people here tonight from the development side, I think, I believe, has that testing been done? Do you guys have any idea what you can do?
Some of it's been done. We did, we did do septic testing over there, the results aren't all back yet.
Oh, so we're.
And there was stormwater testing being done now too.
Okay.
The, the test bits have been done. The perk test has not been performed yet. It's just, the perk, the probe tells you if you can even do it or not. With the probes that were done over here, it's, it's gonna definitely be able to be done.
I think it's safe to say at this point, the testing that we've done to date would have a much less density than what would have been allowed underneath central sewage.
Absolutely.
In essence, what you're, in essence, in essence, what you're doing is that you're trying to allow for mixed use now, and you, you're allowing yourselves the opportunity to basically kick the can down the road for further discussion underneath the comprehensive plan or whatever, as far as how to deal with mixed use densities, if central sewage and when central sewage may come down, down the road. But this, this option to allow it with onsite disposal, mixed use, allows for a change now with the density issue being pushed until, for further discussion.
For further discussion if central sewage.
That is, that is correct. So then, everything that we're basing everything on now is just basically what we have, it's onsite.
On-lot.
So then, the central sewage is over here in Los Field, we're dealing with on-lot. Each one of those numbers of whatever building we can put on there is all determined on what happens with that piece of lot. So as far as anybody getting their excited or whatever about however many units, nobody knows that answer until we find out how much a piece of property a person wants to purchase, and then we do the testing. So numbers are out there, because nobody can tell you unless we go ahead and do that.
Come on, you're not gonna do that until you see the plan.
The next, the next question, who okay's the perk test? Who orders a perk test? Is that the developer, it goes to the property owner, or?
Just so you know, I'm the sewage officer.
Sewage enforcement officer.
But when we did the perk test for this site, because of it being controversial, I brought in the alternate. I brought in my alternate, my cop.
So I believe there's a motion being made.
There was.
I forgot what it was.
A motion.
It worked.
Hey, thanks for the discussion though, I like it, it's great.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion to ask the supervisors to roll over the twenty-five hundred authorized for a planner this year into next year or whatever amount we do not use currently, and to request the supervisors to provide adequate funding throughout this ordeal going forwards as well, as to show what the planners over the last five years averaged, so we can come up with a good number.
Throughout the revision?
What?
Revision instead of ordeal?
Revision.
And let's go back ten years.
Five, or ten might be, take you while.
Yeah, five. I know we had, we had them in here five years ago.
May I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Any discussion?
Can I just ask?
Any discussion?
On the discussion, do you wanna limit that to just on the revisions, or do you wanna also ask for the adequate funding to include the comprehensive planning process?
I would assume the revision.
Well, that's a revision too, so by saying revisions, we're meaning all the revisions.
I would be clear, I would be clear in what section the supervisor.
We wanna wait till the new, the new board of supervisors come in so we can shank hide them, so they'll be more forthcoming to get.
But your budget will be set by the current board in two, in two weeks on the sixteenth, so.
Anything can change.
All right, change, just change it to revisions of, of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. This way it's covered if something else comes up.
You substitute revisions and comprehensive plan instead of ordeal?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Bob.
It's all in the wording, man, it's all in the wording.
Without any further ado, DEPG Santos Development, number six. Gentlemen, the floor is yours if you want it.
Actually, I, I think what we were asking was to make sure that, you know, or to volunteer, you know, any professional advice that we may have. You know, I mentioned how much personal experience I have in the lean developed business, that we're offering our services to help in any way we can as far as going through this process is concerned. You know, as far as, you know, I mean, that's why, that's why we're on the agenda, we're not to talk specifically about what we wanna do next door, it's, it's just to state that we wanna be part of this community.
Help us make an educational, well-based.
We're here for the long haul. And the term when they get it done, you realize it's not gonna be the same development that we thought it was gonna be. We're gonna be flexible as it a density. But we think, you know, this mixed use is occurring all over the country, people, you know, enjoying retail stores and living in apartments, and we think it's a great use for the Santos property. We're gonna deliver a quality development. We wanna roll up our sleeves and work with you to that effort.
Oh, you know as well as we do sitting behind here, we are under a watchful eye in what's going to transpire and.
We have, we have noticed that over the last.
And we all wanted to. So I will thank you personally for any assistance we've offered, and this guy, obviously, and everybody sitting here.
And if you've got any questions or if you want any information, all, all somebody has to do is just to either email me or pick up the phone and ask, and I will, you know, try to dig out whatever information I can in order to help you as far as background information to, to come up with the best solution for this township. And I won't be charged, and I won't be charging two hundred dollars an hour.
Well, I thank you for that.
He said two hundred an hour, that's the pay.
Comprehensive plan, number seven. I guess we're going to be working on it amongst everything else at the same time?
Well, it's what we said. I did talk to Ted Rissick about it, and he agreed, the way to start it is gonna be to get an overall idea on what the township does want on the township. So it's gonna be more or less, everybody's gonna have to have an input in it, before he even looks at it, he wants to know what the different views are.
Like what you're saying, we should put together a green sheet.
Yeah, you know, it's, I think, after talking to him, I think the best thing to do is, you know, I got, like, just the first ten, I, like I said to everybody at the last meeting, look at the first ten pages. First ten pages general, basically give you the fact that it's a gateway community. And we got ten pages of what a gateway community is, well, there's definitions for a gateway community, we don't need ten pages to say what a gateway community is. And, and it describes it exactly as it's described in here on the ten pages.
So what you're saying is we can alleviate the ten pages?
Yeah, this is, well, I just wanted to give an example, I'm just saying, you know.
But, Bob, scientists get paid by the page.
Yeah, I know. I know, but whoever we work with is gonna work the way we want it to work. And not, you know, I'm not.
Given the pinch, I wanted to save the environment, so we need to save paper.
See, every comprehensive plan I've ever been involved with starts off with a wish list, about whether you do it here at unions or send out postcards, what are the ten things that are.
And that's what I, that's what I wanted to discuss tonight, you know, what, what do you think is the best way to get everybody's opinion, you know?
Well, we have a lot to discuss here. My thoughts is, is let's make sure that we advertise it, we'll open it up, we'll have papers at the door, we'll let people come in, give us their ten things of what they think is gonna be best for the area. We'll go ahead and take them, and we'll just make sure, we'll measure them out, so this way we, you know, don't have twenty-five hundred people saying, well, I think we should have green lights going down the road or something, you know?
Yeah.
And then, then we'll have to call for another meeting, and we'll bring those out, and we'll give people the opportunity to go ahead and, and see which way we're going, and from that point, that's when we contact the planner.
And, well, planners are very good at, at actually putting, putting that, putting all of that together, whether it be a postcard type of thing or a bill or, or a survey of some sort.
Well, he said that, pretty much just to take that, it's kind of a survey right now, just to give him an idea on what, what everybody's looking at. And then for mayor, he'll help us.
Okay. Until, until they have the parameters of what people want, they can't do it.
He's currently reviewing the old one. So that he can see what the people's idea is of what they want for your area and, and what the old one had in it. I said, well, get ready for a lengthy read.
Okay, so then if we were to put this forth, would we come up with a laundry list of like twenty-five different things we'd like to see, or we just open it up and let people say, okay, this is what I wanna see in.
Well, I think we should make a list.
Categorize.
Yeah, categorize it.
Yeah, this is what I'm saying.
And just let them make comments on each category.
Okay.
Because you're, you're, you know, the comprehensive plan's gonna have to factor in the demographics in the township, the facilities in the township that are available, you know, educational facilities, medical facilities, all these things that we talk about meeting after meeting after meeting, that we don't really have a lot of, that's what you wanna focus on.
Is there someplace that we can go to get a list like that, or is there?
There should have been one in the old comprehensive plan.
I mean, everybody's gotta remember, population growth from, from the eighties to now was phenomenal.
I'm really sorry, but I, I, I keep coming back to this line of township, right? So we're putting off the rails, I mean, this is what they did, the public survey.
Can I, can I ask? It's, we're not on a public survey.
It's all right, just take this, take a look, you want people's opinions, we got like five people in here, not everybody can make this.
Give me one, I got them in my car.
Parent, teacher conferences and whatever else, you, we gotta put something on the web, we gotta put something out there that makes it easy for people to give their opinion. And I apologize in advance.
That doesn't make it right.
Oh, you're right.
It doesn't make it right. And now, if you want us to respect you, you have to respect our point of order. You're not doing it. You think you can go ahead and just do that? That's not right.
You're right.
I mean, we're here for you, we're willing to work with you, but for you to go ahead and do something like that is totally off-kate.
I would, I apologize.
I, I just have, just one comment regarding this. Lehman Township is about ten times larger than Milford Township, and I really don't think that a public opinion survey that Lehman Township puts out is gonna be something that Milford Township needs. That's my story here.
I don't think you were intending us to use what they had, right?
No.
You were saying, that's what they did.
Right, exactly.
Which is what the planner's gonna tell you to.
Yeah. But that's what I said, I think we've, from talking to Ted, we make up the categorized sheet, hand that out and let people make comments on it so we can give them to Ted and he can get a feel for what the areas want. And then he'll come, he'll come to the meetings, he said, he'll work with us. I don't think we can ask for any more than that.
No, that, that sounds like a very.
No, I, as long as he's willing to do that, that's great.
So he told me.
But I still think you need to have somebody that's gonna be here, answer questions, to go through, because when you send out a. to go through, because when you send out a survey, when you send out this survey, you're going to get not a couple dozen responses.
Oh, I know.
You're going to get hundreds, if not more, responses, okay? And, and someone's going to have to put that together.
In perspective.
They're going to have to facilitate it. They're going to have to come back and say, well, 75% of the people who responded are concerned about transportation. 30% of the people are concerned about medical facilities, okay? And, and that's, that's your starting point. That's where you start that comprehensive plan. Okay, you know, take the old comprehensive plan and start with that. You, you start with what, today, what people want, what people need.
And just, I mean, what I started to say before, the, the population growth since the eighties, early eighties was phenomenal here. We went from a, a county of 10 to 12,000 people to 58,000 people in no time. And because of the traveling that's been done, most of the people that live here travel down towards the city to go to work, or to the city itself. And due to the fact that that's happening, insurance is around here have gone sky high, especially auto insurance, because on record, it looks like 85% of Pike County has accidents down in New York City. So, we're a higher risk area because of that. So, I think the overall growth here should be for more jobs, so keep more people here rather than travel. And that's, you know, that's one of the major things we're looking at.
Okay. So, we are in agreement that we're going to go ahead and do a survey. We're in agreement that we're going to send something out. We have to also, when we send that out, like Tony says, we have to be ready for the response.
Right.
So, there's, we're going to have to join forces here and.
Right, just a question for Bob. When you spoke to Ted, did he have any comments regarding, you know, standard type of survey?
Uh, no, I got to get back to him on that. Okay, I want to, I want to take a look and see what kind of surveys have been done.
Right, because I can, you know, last, last two I was involved in ended up being like manuscripts, which really didn't.
No, I think, I think it's got to be a, not, I don't want to say controlled survey, but a limited survey. Give your opinion, but not a, not a life's history.
Tony, is there experience, Tony, that the planner actually comes in and sits down and starts this process with the planning commission?
Yes.
To get the ideas of what, so that he can build a survey?
Yes.
That's, that's how I always was under the impression how it works. The planner comes in.
And planner's going to suggest.
He looks at our town, our town, not everybody else's town, our town.
Planner's going to suggest.
Especially if you just said Lehman Township's 10 times bigger, so he's not going to do a survey based on that.
He's going to suggest that he has, that, that there be open forums with township residents.
Right.
And that they be done during the day so that, and at night, so that people who can't.
Accommodate all.
Can't, so that you can accommodate all, all kinds of people.
But it's like you said, you know we need healthcare and that.
Well, and, and Delaware, and the last one I was involved with was Delaware Township. They haven't finished, well, I think they did now, but.
It went on for a while.
It went around for like seven or eight years before they finally finished it.
Well, healthcare's always been a problem here.
Well, it's, I mean.
But we get them, we get them moving in, and they move right out.
Well, that's what it is. I mean, right now, it's out. Everybody's out. I mean, I'm taking my kids up the phones, don't know, because there's nothing around here. So, that's a main concern, as far as I know, with a lot of people.
And I know at the hospital over in Port Jervis, I just had an incident recently there where.
One?
A person was taken from Milford over to Port Jervis, and when, when they were treated, they were going to be discharged to a skilled nursing facility, and of course, they say, well, no, we can't send you anywhere in New York. We have to send you back to Pennsylvania because Pennsylvania has to pay for it, not New York.
I was just going to say, my daughter started in Pennsylvania with concussion treatment. The doctor moved out to Port Jervis, and we got told they weren't going to take her on terms anymore. So.
It's, it's an issue that affects everyone.
I, I figured that's going to be one priority on that list.
Well, it would come under services. Services is one of the nine, I believe, nine key points in the comprehensive plan. A survey, we should just ask everybody's abbreviated opinion for each one, you know, it's like, what do you want for transportation? What do you have for services? Recreation, infrastructure, whatever, what have you.
All right, let me get, why don't you let me give Ted a call again and see if he's done reading the alderman?
One other thing to think about is, you know, utilize the county planning agency too. Because they're going to have all that demographic information that we need.
Well, I figured I was going to go to that.
We're on a first-class basis with that.
I mean, they've got the 2010, they've got the 2010 census, and they also have kind of an idea of what it is now.
Ted, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Bob, I thought you were going to go to Westfall Township, maybe Dingman's, to show a look about the comprehensive plan, if they wanted to join in with Milford Township.
Uh, no, I think the decision was made that we create our own first, and then if we want to combine forces later on, we can do that.
Mike, you had a question?
That's, that's the way it was directed, huh?
No, I, the thing about the surveys, I'm not sure if I'm tracking what's going on with the surveys. Is it going to be done here physically? Or, I mean, this is 2020, you got Survey Monkey, big decisions, corporations are making the surveys. So, I mean, just wondering if you're going to go into digital way, like, because that's what Fred was alluding to. Because you have access to people that are like, you know, holed up in closets somewhere. What's that?
I would venture it's going to be the old-fashioned way from there.
Probably some combination or combination.
Because what I'm hearing, it sounds like some people on the board seem like they're not really, don't want a whole lot of people responding to surveys and stuff, because it takes comment, whatever, but I think.
Not a lot of people, you're taking that.
No?
That's not what was meant. What was meant was not lengthy.
Process.
No, lengthy, long paragraphs under inspection.
Wouldn't the visual survey tool, whatever it is, there's several out there, wouldn't that kind of eliminate that?
I'm just, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll probably have.
That'd be part of your vision, right?
Yeah. It should be. Basically, you have a checkbox. You think that medical facilities are more orientated in Milford Township, yes or no? Like you said, so there's not long paragraphs in the explanation wish list, you just.
I just wanted to know if there's going to be visual access to it, that's all, because a lot of people want to show up.
I'm sure the supervisors would lean towards that to make it easier.
Yeah.
Well, Mike, I know you haven't been here because you've been coy on about.
I'm leaning against it, I won't body much.
Say, probably. The comprehensive, last comprehensive plan, don't quote me, but I'm just going to, I think it was 187 pages? And I think most comprehensive plans are maybe 40 to 50. So, I mean, I'm sure I could probably get you a copy when I take you on your trip, if you're really interested in reading it.
You really don't, you really don't want to read it.
I don't want to piss him off, right? No, it's, it's going to take time. It's not going to happen overnight. We've been here, we're a relatively new board, so to speak, what, we've been here six months? We're trying to get things done, and it is a slow process.
You say it's a process.
And again, the comprehensive plan is not going to be something that pinpoints things that are going to happen. It's going to be.
It's a wish list for future.
It, it's going to be, give you an idea of direction, not exactly what you're going to get. And we got a lot of exactly what we're going to get in this one.
All right. Is that enough on the comprehensive plan?
Just one question, and then that is, oh, I'm sorry, my name is here. I thought you were going to name me.
Both ears.
I just wanted to ask.
Whoever wants to go first. Talk it once, and whoever's louder wins.
I wanted to ask if you all got the pages from the municipal planning code that tell you what you have to include, and we talked about that at the last, at the last meeting.
We're sure. I believe there's 19 points. I don't have them memorized. I probably should have brought them with me.
So, you did not get what the municipal planning code has to say about what you have to include?
Yes.
I don't have it memorized.
I don't have it memorized either.
No, I'm asking you if you were given copies.
No, I have my own books.
The planner will also address that. Whenever a planner comes in, he has to make sure they're within accordance with that. Everything's in accordance with that, unfortunately.
Erica?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate what Mike said. I would just really like to see it be online as well, because I think it would give more people an opportunity to respond, and I appreciate that you're looking to set daytime hours or evening hours here. I think that's great too, but I just wanted you to hear my opinion that I think it's.
We have to do it both ways, because, I mean, even our previous secretary still doesn't use a computer at home, so we got to figure out how to address it. My mom still doesn't use a computer, so we got to figure out those residents mailing it and doing it. Imagine they can say there is a very, do electronic, yeah, something on there.
A draft that what we work on could be posted as a draft.
And we actually have an inventory of everybody that lives in the township.
Larry, if you send this survey out, you can put it on there, as you can respond like I'm a clear paper.
Yeah.
Or we can watch the paper. That would probably be the best way to start, like, I don't know.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot.
Let me, let me talk to Ted again and see if he has any kind of pre, pre-made surveys.
Well, he's probably.
I'm sure it's not before.
So, it's like, I'm sure he'll know the best way to get the information out back, yes.
One more comment on that is, you know, a lot of people use Milford Township. I live in Westfall Township, at the end of a road in Milford Township, so I think it would be helpful to have responses from people who live in the area and use and travel through Milford Township and not just be limited to the township. I use Milford Borough, I use Westfall Township, I use Dingman Township, you know, Matamoras, Delaware Township. I mean, we're really a community and not just a mine.
I'm sure planners could address those requirements of the MPC.
I just heard Larry saying, you know, Milford Township addresses, and I would like to see it opened up to the community and not just the township.
I think we, didn't we pretty much go through that every municipality should have their own municipal plan first, and then they join up amongst themselves? And I get the grant funding available when you combine forces, I get that. But other townships in this area have their own municipal plan, and they do take advice from their neighboring townships and municipalities as well. And I think right now, you live in Westfall, Mike's in Milford, where are you at, Dave?
Where do I live? I'll assume in Westfall Township. Right now, you're in 106 East Hartford Street.
Okay, so, I mean, we are listening to inputs from our neighboring communities.
She said we have to start at home first and then work our way out, that's all.
I hear you, but even in that Lehman Township survey, I looked through it online. It was available for everyone to look at or even comment on. Do you travel through the township? What do you use the township for?
I see Jay Newfield about every two weeks.
You what?
In passing. She's a supervisor down there, isn't she? Or she's.
No.
Off her mind, wrong, wrong neighborhood.
All right, so we'll leave it at that, and we'll see what's available for survey and report that back at the next workshop, get it available, everybody.
And from that point there, we can go forward.
And we can move forward.
Robert? I guess this is a public discussion. Rachel.
Yeah, I, I just want to point out to you all that under the sunshine.
If you just could hold the noise down, we could hear her better.
Under the sunshine act, the public has the right to comment on any item on your agenda before you vote on it. So, since public participation is limited to the ends of meeting the way you have your agendas set up right now, the only other alternative is for people to comment item by item.
Excuse me, sir?
They can't comment up front.
We're trying to listen to her, and I used to work on jets. My ears don't work as good as they used to, so, you know, we want to keep some kind of order, you know? There is a hallway out there for a little private chats. I'm sorry, Rachel.
I just see that you're frustrated a little bit at the volume of public participation at every juncture, every line item, but if you don't have public participation before you're voting on these items, that's the alternative.
Has there, has there not been?
No, every time we make a, go for a vote.
Discussion before every vote?
Indeed, indeed, but you seem very frustrated by it, at the response to Fred, so that's what I'm suggesting.
That was not a discussion. That was something coming up and handing something to us.
In the middle of the discussion at the table.
Well, that is in the trunk.
It wasn't, it wasn't his time to be up walking around.
So, it was being recognized by the chair that was, or by the, by the board that was the issue?
Correct. I mean, it was an open.
And I was unaware of public discussion in a motion. I was thought you'd do the motion, but, I'm sorry. And as far as the agenda, I don't know who type, who authorized whatever. I think public participation should have been a little higher up in the, in the top level, too. That's just me. But we usually are pretty loose out here.
It's actually laid out the right way.
We appreciate it.
My suggestion is you have public discussion after you approve your minutes, and then have another one at the end.
Yes. Because you can't just have it at the beginning, because then they don't know what we're going to talk about.
You can call the first one, public discussion, the agenda items.
Yeah, the agenda.
The way it's done.
Yeah, all over, everywhere else.
But you do have to be able to tell what you mean by the agenda items.
Well, what we're talking about, Rachel, is like, if there's nothing on here about